To the Ottawa City Commission Study Session. Do we have any public comments? Thank you. Our items for presentation and discussion, the first one is an introduction of Parks Department Employees Ian Harn and Daryl Worthington. Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor and Commissioners. I just wanted to take the time real quick to introduce a couple of, a couple of the seasonals that we have working. These two specifically work for the Parks and Cemeteries. We have several other seasonals throughout the city, but these two were closest with me, so I wanted to make sure we got a chance to introduce them before their time was up. So we've got Daryl Worthington, he's been with us, he started last year, so this is his second year with us. Daryl worked thirty-seven years at Wolf Creek Power Plant, retired twenty-twenty, and then took a couple of years off, came back and looking for some extra punishment, so he, he found us. And then Ian Harn, he's our newest one, he started with us this year. What are you, seventeen years old, Ian? Yeah, he'll be a senior this year, I think he's going to graduate from Wellsville. So both of these guys have done an excellent job for us. They've done a really job, really good job maintaining a lot of our parks, they're doing a lot of mowing, a lot of weed eating, cleaning a lot of our shelter houses. A couple of the big projects that they've worked on, Daryl, last year, basically by himself, the Sexton's Building out there at Highland Cemetery, he's the one that transformed that into what it looks like now, so thank you, Daryl, for that. And then with the storm last week, we weren't able to complete the project that they had gotten started on this year, but they started working on the, the walk bridge that goes across the river here on the Prairie Spirit Trail, so they started painting on that as well. So we will get it finished, but unfortunately we'll have to do it without Ian's help because his last day is going to be this Friday. So I just wanted to thank the Commission for allowing these seasonals to be here, and then especially thank you two for what you do.
You guys want to add anything?
What's that?
You want to add anything? It's all yours?
Nope. Like to be back next year if it's allowed, I mean.
Well, we certainly know that you guys have been a lot of help for DJ and the other crews. They've had nothing but good things to say about, you know, all the seasonal help, so certainly something I'm in favor of, for sure.
I appreciate the mowing of the parks, I know one year we were short help, we only had to mow part of Kansas where you could play disc golf, and rest was high grass, and I always play on the edges anyway, so I'm kind of lost out there. But now we've got the whole park mowed, I can find everything, and I appreciate you getting the next effort, make sure that looks nice. And I think about this too, all the tournaments we've, we're growing and growing, we have more tournaments this year, out of towners that come in here in the Sierra Parks, I think it's a great.
Was good last week to see all the departments pulled together when, after the windstorm and everybody. I mean, all the departments worked together, I mean, I thought that was pretty good.
Sorry, it is good.
Gentlemen, thank you, we certainly appreciate all the help that you've given us, and absolutely, if it's up to me, welcome back next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
No worries. Item B is an update on allowance chickens in Ottawa City Limits. Our city manager's got a little something to say about that.
And if the city attorney would like to expand on my comments, I would appreciate and welcome any additional comments. But as you know, we have the request for consideration of a change regarding the city's ordinances on chickens. We also have what I will call a request for a possible change regarding gardening and beekeeping. As these issues share some common legal elements, I'm asking our city attorney to review both and to see if we can address all of these issues at one time. Given the changes in staffing to our formerly Community Development Department, now Neighborhood of Community Services, the process has been slowed, but it is still ongoing and is at the, in front of our task list to be completed soon.
Yeah, so we're, at this point, we're just going to put that on hold so we can hopefully take care of both situations at once. So I know we were hoping to do something about this, Mike, but I think that's a better idea. That way we can, two birds at one stone, or two bees with one stone.
We just like talking about the birds and the bees.
All right, item C is an update on the July thirtieth, twenty twenty-three severe storm.
As you know, we took a wallop on Sunday, July thirtieth, and it's something that, being new to the position, I, I got to learn a lot more about items that were on an important list, but weren't necessarily important and urgent. And it's just, I was grateful to have a team of seasoned and experienced team members to, to work through this process with. And I'll also provide some comments during, some manager comments on my thoughts regarding our specific response from our employees. But with that, I will turn it over to Dennis for some additional comments and to Mike for his crews. And want to take the time to remind everyone that our folks, not only were they working sunup to sundown, but no one received preferential treatment from our commissioners, to myself, to our employees. So not only did our Public Works and Electric Distribution Team put in long hours, but oftentimes even right up till the end, we're going home to a hothouse. So with that, I'll turn it over to our, our professionals who are handling the bulk of the recovery now.
Absolutely true, good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I don't know what to say exactly, you know, it was a process. This storm, you know, rivaled anything that we've seen for a long, long time. And I think it was hard for people to understand that, you know, because it came through so fast, you know, did its thing and, and it was gone, and if you were on the fringes of, of town, you know, you could drive through and almost not think anything really happened, really, really took place. But I've, I've compared this a number of times to, to the ice storm of two thousand and three. You know, it took, it took a lot of lines down, it took a lot of poles down, it created a lot of damage that, you know, quite honestly, on our three hundred and four miles of line, at one point in time, we had, you know, out of six thousand meters, we had eighty percent of them gone, you know, everybody was out of power. Our crews responded remarkably, quite honestly. By Friday, you know, we, we were down to probably twenty people. And that's Yeoman's work, that's Yeoman's work, mutual aid was very important to us. We, we did have crews from, from Baldwin Gardner, Augusta, then the, the KMEA crew that came in and, and then also a crew from Garnett that came up. And, and all of those helped us out tremendously. I think anytime we have something like this happen, you know, there's lessons that we're going to learn, you know, maybe things that, that could be done different, maybe could be done better. I believe that, you know, we've even started to have some of those conversations. But for the most part, you know, we'll apologize to everybody that was out for five or six days and be thankful for the ones that got on before that. Not everybody can be first and not everybody's going to be last, and that's going to be the case in any kind of situation like this. So all of that said, kudos to our crews. Kudos to our crews as they came together. I think Mr. Worthington put it well, you know, that, that the things that, that happened weren't just the electric distribution crews, the electricity was very important. And, and I don't take away from the significance of that, but they had a lot of help from other crews that were coming and cutting limbs out of the way, you know, making a path, you know, for them to be able to do some of the things that would have taken them even longer, you know, if we hadn't had all of our crews come together like they did. So I think I'll leave it at that. And any questions that you all have, I'll be happy to answer. I will say that right now, today, we've got four places that need an electrician, need some conversation, you know, before they get back on, but everybody that can be on is on. And that was really Saturday. I think we had about, about fifteen on Saturday that, that they put back on and worked most of the day Saturday. And honestly, I was tickled to see them get the day off on Sunday.
Well, I'd say I appreciate the updates, I think sometimes people, if they can have some information, may not be what they want to hear, but if they get some information, I think I was great to have those updates twice a day like we were doing there. And maybe start sooner on those, but we didn't think about that, but that's a great thing to have. But I, I think once that, and if people can know, I don't know if there's any way to know, Dennis, if, if somebody says, okay, we're going to work on your area tomorrow or the next day, is there any way of letting people know ahead of time?
That is difficult a, as we move through, and, and, and the reason that's difficult is we may be working in an area and, and, and quite honestly, we're not just working in one area. We had, sometimes we'd have three crews on the north side, we'd have another three crews on the south side, and we work as methodically as we can, but at the same point in time, we're as compassionate as anybody else. You know, and if we see that older person or that disabled person or that person that we see an opportunity to get them on, then yeah, we're going to move, we're going to get that done, you know, and come back to that methodical piece. Every time, and I think Brian has, has said this a couple of times, every time we move, you know, it takes that hour or so, you know, to, just for the setup. You know, so a day, sixteen hours gets by pretty quick, you know, in the process of making those moves and doing those kinds of things. So we've got technology out there that's going to help us as we go along. Our AMI meters is one of those. We're just not completely there yet, some, some of those things we've been working on for a while, and we're going to get there, but we just need some more time, you know, to, to really refine and, and make some of those kinds of things work, not only for us as an organization as we get into those, but for the public, to be able to see, you know, honestly, when this is all done, we're going to have an app out there that they can pull up and they can see whether they're on, what has been on, been put on, you know, there's a lot of things like that. On top of that, they're going to be able to see what their, their load is, how they might be more efficient with their house. A lot of those things are going to happen, they're just down the road a little bit.
And that's the smart meter we're talking about, right?
Yes, it is, yes.
And also about tree trimming, I think we talked about that a little bit, maybe getting, be a little bit more proactive on some tree trimming, spend some more money on that. Would that, would that have prevented some of this or not some part of it, what?
Sometimes I think Mother Nature does her own purging, you know, and whether we've been completely through, you know, and done a lot of trimming or not, we were still going to have some issues with what Mother Nature threw at us. We've been pretty good about spending, and, and I'm just going to throw the number out there so people understand, but we have consistently over the last four or five years spent in, in excess of sixty thousand dollars on bringing outside crews in to, to trim trees, just to trim trees along the electric lines. We try to get as much of that as we can with our own crews, you know, when, when we have the time to do that. So we have tried to be proactive. There's a lot of trees out there.
And I learned something, that we have three qualified arborists for trimming on our staff, but when they wear many hats, we have to rely upon outside assistants to do the job we need to do.
That's good, I think Brian mentioned earlier in his comments that we are a tree city, so that comes with the good and the bad, we got to take it with it.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah. Brian and I were talking about that earlier, we, we have held that designation as Tree City USA, you know, and it's evident, you know, as you go around, that we do have that. Like I say, sometimes, sometimes, and something we have absolutely no control over is Mother Nature is going to do their own thing.
Dennis, I think it says a lot about crews that, about the hard work that they do day in and day out throughout the years, that when something like this happens, that we just expect that you're going to be back on in an hour or two. But because of the substantial damage to the, to the lines that were, that had occurred, unfortunately, I, I don't think any of us were prepared, you know, to, to the extent of what it was. So I think, I think just because they're used to it being on so quick, that, you know, when, when it didn't happen, it's like, hold on, what's going on? And then, you know, when they realized, when, when the public started to realize, wow, this is way bigger than, you know, than we anticipated. I think some started to, you know, be a little bit more forgiving, for sure.
Yeah, absolutely, and we've had so much good response from the public, you know, people that have offered water, offered Gatorades, offered, you know, you know, quite honestly, offered money at points in time. And it's not because they were there getting their power on, it's because they were thankful for what the crews do, you know, and there again, we always have the other side of that, we always will, and it has been minimal, we, and we've walked through it.
Well, and as you said, I mean, without, you know, Director Haley's crew going out first thing and, and removing a lot of those trees, I mean, it's, it would have been even more difficult for you guys to get there, so, so certainly.
Yeah, I, we, we've, Public Works and the folks helping us, we've been working twelve hours, twelve hour days trying to clear debris. I would estimate now, Dennis, you might have a different number in your head, but I'd estimate right now we're probably forty percent through the city on the, on the first round. We will be going back through town after we get through the initial, the initial push. So, you know, if, if public, you know, citizen sees limbs in their yard and that, that were missed, have no fear, we're coming back, we're coming back. Dennis said it really well, the way the crews pulled together to, to work together and to get through this has, has just been amazing. I've got part of Dennis's crew helping, helping the micros with the, with the limb cleanup. We've had Garnett and Baldwin down here helping us clear debris and, and help from them has made a world of difference in how much we've been able to get through so far. So, you know, thank you to those other communities for, for sending help. It's been, it has been greatly appreciated by both Dennis and I and the public. So without them, power wouldn't, we, we wouldn't be in the shape we're in, right? Wouldn't happen. I do want to throw something else out there that, that City Manager Silkot mentioned about three certified arborists, that's just in Dennis's crew, I've got a whole bunch of them. So just about, I, I would say ninety percent of my staff is, are, are certified arborists too, so. So, yeah. I think that's about all I got, what are any questions?
And I know, I had, you know, some people reach out to me, what, once we knew that we had other communities coming to help. At this, we're talking at the point where people are starting to get frustrated, and they were asking why maybe Olathe didn't come down, or Overland Park, or, you know, some of the metro cities. And, I mean, they were dealing with the same thing, they have a ton of power outages right now that had been lasting, I think they got hit by a storm maybe a week before we did, and then also by this one that had caused significant outages up there as well. So I'm sure that's why some of the other cities around us didn't come help as much as people think they should, I guess.
Yeah, and, and I, I would comment on that if you don't mind, just to the end that, you know, the cities that we're talking about to that end are all Evergy customers. You know, and Evergy at one point in time had over eighty thousand people out. You know, Evergy's the one that when they have people out, not only do they have their crews, but they're the first ones that are able to pull the contractors and some of those kinds of folks that, you know, in to help them. You know, which there again, that's okay, you know, we, we saw a lot of mutual aid from, from people around us that, you know, have the same situation as us. And, and, and quite honestly, I think it worked about as good as it could, you know, for the situation that we had. The one other thing that I would throw out there, you know, just for the public to understand, is there are places where we do have messes, this is not over, it will take us a month probably, you know, to get all of the, the lines, the sagging lines pulled up where they belong, the, the wire that's on the ground that maybe we cut loose and didn't use again, poles that are laying, you know, maybe in the easement. There's a number of things like that, that it's going to take us quite a while, you know, to get back and get all of that cleaned up because the regular day-to-day work doesn't go away. You know, we've got that to do along with the cleaning that we've got to do.
Sorry, Dennis, I didn't get a, jump in when you were talking about those AMI meters. Do you have an idea roughly, either a percentage or kind of number around town that we have? And then could you kind of roughly explain the benefit in this, you know, situation like this, like you were talking about, with those meters compared to a traditional meter?
Okay, yeah, we, we kind of went through that, Zach, and we have a little over half. We've got about sixty-three hundred meters, and we have a little over half, both on the, the electric and the water side. Those meters connect directly back to City Hall through what we call gatekeepers. And what that allows is then for us to see on a map exactly who has power and who does not have power. It gives us the ability to, you know, create turn-ons and or shut-offs without ever leaving City Hall. There's, there's a number of, of benefits to technology that, that we will eventually see with these meters as we get them all out there. And we get all the bugs worked out of, out of the maps and, and the things that, that we are using to be able to see some of those things. As I said, there's, there's a huge benefit to the customer also. That they can see, you know, their peak times, you know, when they're using the most electricity, maybe be able to control that, you know, through, through some avenues within their, their own system, within their own house. So, yeah, we're going to see a lot of good things come from this. I'm going to tell you, and, and the city manager and I have talked about this a little bit, technology is not the whole answer. We don't get anything done without people out there that have a knowledge of the system, that understand some of the things that, that are most important. We have services back for people, although they may not have power at their, their house. We have services back for people very quickly. You know, a lot of the, the groceries and the, the gasoline and some of those kinds of things that people really require, those services were back on very, very quickly.
And Director Landis, isn't it about an eight to twelve month lead time for the supply chain from the time we order those meters to, to actually arrive?
I believe so, I think that's, we, last time we talked about it.
So it's, it's not, that's part of the issue too with, with getting them filled out, it's.
Yeah, and I can tell you, we just got another four hundred in the warehouse, you know, so we're, we're going to, we're going to be putting more out there. We are getting some in, and we continue the process. It's, it's been a process, and we, we have had some good conversations about it, and we will continue to do so.
And Dennis, on that process, are people able to request those, or are you guys kind of working through a list?
We, we've actually spread those out a little bit. The way these meters work is, is everything from the electric meters go back to the, the, the gatekeepers. There's about five gatekeepers in town, and so in order to keep those meters hitting the gatekeepers, you've got to create that mesh, that, that network of, of meters so that they can talk to each other and then go back to the gatekeeper. So we've pretty methodically spread those out, and we're in various areas clear across the town from north to south. We're getting to that point where we're going to be able to be a little more methodical, so to speak, and be able to hit areas of town all at once, and, and then just continue that process until we get them all down, get them all in there.
Thank you.
You bet.
Well, as we've said a few times over the last couple of weeks, thank you. Please let your, your crews know that we appreciate everything that they've done, the hard work that they've put in, the long hours that they've certainly put out to, to get our citizens back to where they are today. And I know you two gentlemen don't want to hear, but thank you too. Without your leadership, you wouldn't have the kind of crews that you do, that are able to mesh together like they have in order to complete that task, those tasks that they've done over the last week, so thank you both.
Yep, they're a good bunch.
Thanks, thank you. All right, comments by our city manager.
Well, I'd like to kind of reiterate what you were just commenting on, Mr. Mayor, which is a heartfelt thank you to our, our city's unsung heroes, which is our, our Public Works and our Electric Utility and, and all of our utility staff. In the aftermath of the July thirtieth storm that devastated our community, I find words are inadequate to express the depth of gratitude that we have as, as a city and that we owe the tireless employees of our Public Works and Utility Departments, as well as our emergency services, who were actually out responding in the thick of the storm itself. Their unwavering commitment to restoring order and normalcy during these challenging times is a testament to their dedication, their resilience, and honestly, their, their shared determination to get the job done. However, behind these, these brave and dedicated individuals stand their families. Their families have been supportive and understanding, and in many ways silently sharing the burden of the unexpected challenges of the storm. The late nights, the missed dinners, weekends, and even occasionally on other events, holidays away from their loved ones. The sacrifices of the families do not go unnoticed. It is crucial to recognize that while our city employees worked on the frontlines, their families became the unsung heroes, holding the fort at home and providing the emotional and moral support needed during the trying times, oftentimes in sweltering conditions as they themselves were without power as well. It's easy, especially during these times of crisis, to focus on the immediate problem and overlook the human side of things. But it is the human spirit, the combined effort of our employees, their families, that allow us to bounce back stronger and be more united. Each cable mended, each pole reset, and each hour spent in the blistering heat, often in the pouring rain, and as we approach the autumn, we will have a biting cold to bring back the warmth, the light, the coolness of our air conditioning, essentially the, the security and the quality of life that we cherish in Ottawa. I want to thank every employee and know that your sacrifices, your sleepless nights, and your restless drive to restore our community did not go unnoticed. You are the backbone of our municipal organization, and your actions during this crisis exemplified the essence of community service. To the families, we understand the anxiety and worries you must felt every time your loved one stepped out to combat the aftermath of the storm. Your support, patience, and resilience played a pivotal role in our city's recovery process. Your strength gave them the strength, and for that, we are all profoundly grateful. In conclusion, and on behalf of the entire community, I extend my deepest gratitude to both of our, to both our hardworking employees and their supportive families. Our city's recovery would not have been possible without you, without your combined efforts. Thank you for showing us the true meaning of service, dedication, and community spirit. But I want to reiterate that you reflect the community we serve, where neighbors help neighbors and even help strangers. Stay Ottawa strong and know that you are valued, appreciated, and respected. Together, we shall always rise above the, rise above our adversity and dedicately, dedicatedly serve our community. It is with our deepest respect and gratitude that I share these thoughts. Thank you.
Comments by our city commissioners, Commissioner Graves?
Yep, we need thing better than that, so thank you again to everybody.
Thank you, Commissioner Clayton?
I as well, just will reiterate now everything Brian said, as well as we said last week to those crews who are out working through that. Also, I think we had successful dare camp at the end of last week as well. I know I talked to some, some kids who came home as counselors and they were pretty exhausted. So at least it sounded like that went well as well, and that's it.
Thank you, Mayor Prokhorov.
Yeah, just thank Zach for your work and meeting that put together kind of the last minute for dedication of a dinner for the people. That was, that was well attended, looked like, and that was a good idea. I also wanted to just say congratulate our city. Um, also want to just say congratulate our city manager has been on the job, what, four months and be tested by fire this quickly like this. I really thank you Rose for the occasion. So you did a good job as well pulling everybody together. And I think I says, I appreciate very much your dedication in this too. And what I heard you spent behind the scenes too. And I'm just out there, I've been in India where they have rolling blackouts and people don't understand what that's like. Maybe like a meeting like this and all of a sudden electricity just go off. You have no idea what's going to come on again. It could be the next day, two days or thirty minutes. And it's impossible to plan things when you, you need electricity. So people there have learned to work around that. But uh, I think there they expect it here. We've gotten kind of soft, maybe take things for granted and electricity is always there and ready to use. Uh, we have to think about that, that it's, it's a privilege. It's not a right. And uh, and we have to remember that. I know we've had a lot of people that complained, but I, what I've learned is the complainers are rare, but they're good people everywhere. And I think you guys experienced that, that people helping out to the, paying attention to the employees, giving them water, food, whatever, and giving them time to. Get the job done and, and telling them that they appreciate their efforts. And so I think that's important that everybody know that as well. And that's all I had.
Thank you. I have no additional comments. I do have a few announcements tomorrow night at Legacy Square from six to eight is the Fusion Business Expo. August fourteenth, our study session is here at four P M. And then our regular meeting is at ten A M. Here at city hall on August sixteenth. Is there anything else to come before the commission? I'll return.